Good evening, let me go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Rural County City Consolidated Independent School District to order. It is Tuesday, March 26, 2019. It is 6:30 and we are at the Roque Guerra Junior Elementary Cafeteria. For purposes of determining our quorum, we're going to take a roll call. Mr. Noe Castillo.
Present.
Mr. Basilio Varejao.
Here.
Mr. Letizia Lopez.
Here.
Dr. Beat.
Here.
Mr. De Garcia.
Present.
And myself. Eddie, I'm in this present, we do have a quorum. Mr. Lizar Velasquez is not present. Uh, Pledge of Allegiance, well, Mr. Garcia, can you help us with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. The flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, Indelible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Section three approval minutes, special board meeting February 22nd, 2019, and regular board meeting February 26th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I make a move, uh, that we approve special board meeting on February 22nd, uh, uh, 2019, and regular board meeting February 6th of the year, 2019.
There's a motion by Mr. Varejao, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Noe Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Section four, public forum. Be that way. I'm going to give you five minutes.
Good afternoon. Um, just a couple of things. In the morning, I wish my kids had their management very good. I am not concerned, you know, with the people, they look unlike what they think of them. In the morning, they will look like they don't mind that one, they feel like, um, the best place to be, they just go. So, since now, I'm getting. My husband's a good man, he's a good guy, and he loves to go to the land, and he's been happy very long. So, he's not like me, showing up at night, I get around, and I'm sure of his feelings.
Thank you, Mr. Montalvo, we appreciate you.
Sure.
Go ahead.
We already ordered the parts. Uh, we also talked to the. Uh, we, we did meet on it, we ordered the parts. We also talked to the light company, they're going to come in and install the lights.
And we're waiting for our parts to come in to fix the lights on our property. Uh, we are addressing as quickly as we can.
That's a both, a both move?
Yes, sir, we're working on it, yes.
Looking at all the different schools?
Yes, we're looking at li- lights. Uh, like at Gruia High School, the parking lot, there was no lights, we, we installed them, so. We're going, we, we will address, we're going as quickly as we can, but I, I promise, we'll get it done.
Thank you again, Mr. Montalvo. Now, section five, information and proposals from superintendent and staff. Item number one, consider and take possible action on travel requests from Gruia Middle School, Ringo Middle School, Veterans Middle School, and Rio High School.
I make a motion that we approve item one as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varejao, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item number two, consider and take possible action on notice from Buddy's Store to sell alcoholic beverage 300 feet from Farbri Line of Valverde, Cunzella, Barra Elementary School. Do, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve, uh, I make a motion that we go on the recommendation on Mr. Robles, not to approve item two as presented.
There's a move.
Would that be right now? Okay. Well, I make a motion that we do not approve item two as presented as per the recommendation, Mr. Robles.
There's a motion by Mr. Varejao, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Let the minister reflect that Mr. Lizar Velasquez is, uh, now present. Item number three, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from the Rural County City Parks and Recreation Department of Rural County City, 2019 Spring High School Volleyball League and Youth Volleyball League.
Ball League and Youth Volleyball League. The high schools participating will be Rio Grande City High School, Gruia High School, Roma High School, La Jolla High School, Palmview High School, Juarez-Lincoln High School. Liability insurance, uh, is provided by the city. Administration recommends approval of the request of the facility.
Is there a motion or any discussion on item three?
I saw a move that we approve item three as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Varejao, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item four, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from Texas Valley Sports, Rural County, Rio High School Practice Football Field.
Texas Valley Sports requests the use of the Rio High School School Practice Field for football games. They want to host their football games on four evenings, which will be March 31st, April 13th, May, May 19th, and June 22nd of 2019. They will provide general liability insurance before they come and use the facility.
Do they have the proper equipment that says bikes and stuff of that nature?
I'm not sure about that, sir. I don't know if Mr. Ramirez has talked to them, I know that.
How, how many games are they asking for?
Four.
Four?
Yeah, yes, sir, good evening. Uh, to answer a question, I spoke to one gentleman, but, uh, the general lab bid was to cover more of the facilities, not necessarily a personal injury. Uh, my understanding is these gentlemen are playing or practicing on their, on their own risk. Uh, they're with hopes of making the Dorados Indoor Arena, uh, League. Uh, they have no, they, they got no compensa- they get no compensation or coverage of any kind. The liability is more for the use of the facility.
Mr. Peña, are, is the school liable in any form or fashion?
Uh, you know, we, we are protected under the Texas Torque Claims Act, and so, uh, people who use our facilities, I would prefer getting a waiver. Uh, but, uh, other than that, we, we have, uh, the only reason that we're liable in any kind of injury is, is if, if there's a motor vehicle accident with one of our, our, uh, school buses, or cars, or trucks, things of that nature. Nevertheless, uh, out of an abundance of precaution, I would prefer to have a waiver. Um, I think I've prepared one and sent one off. It's a simple one, it's not very complicated, but at least it gives, uh, the individual who is going to be, um, uh, playing, uh, the understanding that they're there at their own risk.
And Mr. Ramirez, have, have they told you that they're willing to sign a waiver, or that, the waiver that Mr. Peña's talking about?
No, they are not told me, no, no, sir.
Why don't we approve it with the idea that they have to sign that waiver, otherwise they don't get permission? Only four games, correct?
Yes.
And I guess, Mr. Ramirez, check if they have the right equipment or the, the shoes?
Okay.
Correct, I guess. With that said, I move that we approve item four with the condition that they get waivers and they have the proper equipment, and that Mr. Ramirez, uh, checks that everything's right, like this.
There's a motion by Mr. Varejao, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item five, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from Rural Grande Revolution, Rio High School Practice Football Field.
Attached, you will find the request from the Rural Grande Revolution for the use of the Rio High School Practice Field for football practice and games. They want to use a proper place to practice in the afternoon with lights and safety for all. Your schedule will be Wednesday and Friday from 5:30 to 8:30, and Saturday and Sunday anytime afternoon. Uh, no liability insurance is available.
Let me ask, let me ask a real quick question. Uh, are, are these facilities going to be used by our kids in the summer or not, do you know, Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, sir, the facilities are still being used, obviously, we're still in, uh, track season.
That, that's what I'm trying to get at, correct?
So, the concern would be that, that they don't interfere with any type of practice. Uh, we practice up to 6:30 or 7:00. Uh, of course, Fridays are mostly meets, so the facility is available. We can start, they're also available, but again, this team that is part of that league that we just approved, uh, before this item, uh, they're part of that league, so they would be playing there or practicing there without any type of liability insurance.
Well, let me ask you a question. Are, are we going to have summer programs there going on at the same time? Like summer track and things of that nature?
Uh, summer track is conducted at the stadium. Uh, but yes, we'll have offseason conditioning for the high school athletes during the months of June and July.
So, would you not recommend this, or recommend it, or what do you think?
So, you already approved the previous item to allow the organization to go ahead and host this game, so this, this is one of the teams that's part of that league. So, obviously, it's up to you, to board, to, just discretion to allow them to practice there for, to participate in that league that you just approved previously.
But they're going, are, are, are our football players going to be doing conditioning and things of that nature at that time too, or not? I guess what I'm trying to say, do we want to mix up students and things with these people practicing at the same time, basically?
And that was my concern, as long as they don't come in before 6 o'clock. I think they requested 5:30, but, uh, we're done after 6 o'clock, uh, and again, that would, that way there's no conflict with the use of the facility. Uh, but again, with the understanding that if you all approve, uh, this league to come in, they're going to be, again, practicing at their own risk. Uh, they have no general liability insurance. Uh, there will be covered only during the, uh, games themselves, but not for personal injury, just, I guess, to cover the facilities themselves.
Okay. Ask, is it asking for, is that just one specific field, or could they go to another field on the, on the campus or the board?
I spoke to one of the athletes, uh, that's part of this, uh, football, uh, team, and they were requesting the Rural County City High School facility, um, but.
I think there we have a couple of fields that are specifically asking for one, or are they going to use all of them?
They were asking for the main one, they almost got the turf, correct?
And we would have, do we have the waiver issue as well, if, if the board were to approve it? So, do you have a, a motion on item five?
I'm going to move right now that until we, we really, I don't have a problem them using for games, but if it's going to interfere with, with some of our students or, that run at night and stuff, maybe the best thing to do is vote, uh, not to approve this item until we get more information on it, I guess. To see how it correlates with our, what our students are going to be doing, are they, in other words, do we have students that go run out there at night, that go practice at night, I don't know.
Well, to answer a question, the, the baseball, softball, track and field go to the end of April, so technically, yes, the facilities are being used till then.
So, at this time, let me move that item five not be approved at this time, I guess.
There's a motion by Mr. Varejao, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign. Motion carries. Item, what is it, six? Item six, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from Court Wear, Sports Apparel and Equipment LLC, or Ringo Campus Baseball and Softball Fields, AC2 Elementary Gym, and Ramiro Villegas Gym.
Roque Cortinas III and Roel Cortinas are new owners of Court, Court Wear, Sports Apparel and Equipment LLC. Our request and permission to have the Court Wear Kickstart Tour to acquire capital to fund the patent process. If approved, the facility's use would be the Fort Ringo Campus for a 5K run, both gyms, AC2 E Elementary, and Ramiro Villegas Gym. Sanchez Football Stadium for the opportunity to hold a Special Olympics event, and the Red Deer Baseball Field and Softball Fields. All events are open to the public.
Do you have a motion or any discussion on item six?
I'm, I'm looking at the notes, and it says, administration does not recommend approval as presented, can you explain?
Uh, yes, um, I do not recommend it. Um, I know that this is going to be a for-profit event, and I know that we were having, or I was having issues as to coming up with an amount, as to how much we would charge, uh, the company to host this event to help him launch his business. So, this reminded me of the agreement that we terminated back in January where we were asked, are we going to allow these companies to come and make a profit out of, out of the district?
With it, with that said, I move that we take Mrs. Robles' recommendation on this item, which is, what is it, Mrs. Robles?
Um, that I do not recommend the approval.
Right, there's a motion by Mr. Varejao, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? Six. Six. Order motion, one abstaining, and motion carries. Item seven, consider and take possible action on community partnership memorandum of understanding between Community Development Institute Head Start and Rural County City CISD for use of elementary campuses in case of a disaster.
This agreement is between the Community Development Institute Head Start, uh, Joanne V. Patino, and Rio Grande City ISD, Alto Bonito Elementary, La Unión Elementary, Ringo's Elementary, General Sanchez Elementary, and Roque Guerra Elementary. The MOU is for the purpose of ensuring coordinated evacuation in the event of a natural disaster or environmental disaster that requires evacuation from the center, and to establish effective lines of communication and to avoid any confusion during a crisis event. This will be accomplished through a mutual partnership in the assessment, planning, and assurance of identified service needs. The contact person would be the campus principal at each elementary campus. Uh, the CDI Head Start will transport students a step if necessary.
Do I have?
Yes, we do recommend the approval.
Do I have a motion or any discussion on item seven?
I saw a move that we, uh, approve, I guess, item number seven as recommended by Mrs. Robles.
There's a motion by Mr. Varejao, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velasquez, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item eight, consider and take possible action on donations to Rural County City CISD.
I move that we, I move that we, donations, always, we accept them, correct?
Total is 8,099.
How much?
8,090.
I move we approve item eight, and, uh, do we send these people who donate money any kind of letter, or?
I believe each campus, uh, should be sending the thank you note.
As presented, item eight.
There's a motion by Mr. Varejao, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider and take possible action on resolution to cast the Rural County City CISD vote representation on the Stark County Appraisal District Board of Director for the 2018-2019 term.
The Stark County Chief Appraiser delivered an official ballot for the Stark County Appraisal District Board of Directors for 2018-2019 on February 28th, 2019. Attached is the resolution for casting the votes by the School Board of Trustees.
I move that we cast all the votes that we have for Mr. Eddie Ramirez and Mr. Noe Castillo for the, uh, for, uh, for the appraisal district.
There's a motion by Mr. Varejao, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed?
Same.
Takes a favor and what, we want to spend some, motion carries. Item number 10, consider and take possible action on pay applications number 12, number 13, and number 14 for the district-wide energy savings and facilities improvement program.
Attached, you will find pay applications 12, 13, and 14 for the district-wide energy savings and facility improvement program. The total for pay application 12 is $74,743.94. The, pay application 13 is for $86,295.36, and the final application, 14, is for $12,621.54. Um, I know that the last time the item was tabled, um, questions were asked, and E3 provided, um, a report that is attached, uh, to the pay applications, answering some of the questions. And also, the third-party engineering field verification report has been provided by Trinity MEP Engineering.
I, I have, excuse me, I have a concern, Mr. President. Um, in the Attorney Center in La Unión, we have a roof that's leaking. You know, I'm not saying the leak wasn't there beforehand, but we have a unit that's been placed on top. I wonder how the third-party individual approved it? How, there's a leak and we have to replace it, we have to fix the roof. Now, what's going to happen if we have to even touch the unit? Is the warranty go out, what happens? I, I, I thinking there's need to be a dialogue, um, because if we're going to go to a options high school, then we need to fix the roof.
With that said, I make a motion to approve pay application 12 and only 12 till we get the rest of the matter resolved.
There's a motion by Mr. Varejao, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 11, consider and take possible action on tax refunds for the month of February 2019.
I saw a move, Mr. President, that we approve item 11 as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Varejao, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 12, consider and take possible action on requisition, $5,000 and over in a 12-month aggregate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, members of the board, Mr. Gonzalez, we do have, um, requisition for your consideration on pages 229 through 232. And if I can make a, uh, correction on page 232, requisition, the very last requisition, 306, 613 for the rubber flooring. This is for, uh, portable event flooring for the, um, uh, Joe R. Sanchez Stadium. For graduation ceremonies and, and other events. Um, a recommendation is to not, um, to have a proposal, we've asked for the company to send another proposal to keep it under $50,000. Um, currently, that particular price would, would cover, um, about half the field, but we're just going to get it, uh, just a little bit, um, smaller coverage. And, uh, and the cost will be no more than $50,000 on, on that particular, uh, requisition. And I also handed out a, uh, an addendum.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
We've, uh, looked at purchasing either plywood or what the company recommends, it's a, uh, it's, it's a, uh, something like a plywood that covers and it also looks aesthetically pleasing. We make the investment to protect the, the astroturf, as they say, but, uh, we, we wanted to go with something with quality that you could either move. You know, we thought about the plywood, but then we talk about humidity, if it rains, it's going to warp, then you have to buy it against the next year. We thought that we bought what is recommended quality that we could use in multiple years for a long period of time. And anytime you're going to have a function there or a graduation, you just take it out and set the stage. Uh, you got to remember that when you have this type of grass, that you have young ladies in graduation with high heels and stuff, that, you know, it, it's very unstable. So, this will give it stable and support and protect the, uh, the astroturf.
Do I have a motion or any further discussion on item 12?
I move that we approve item 12 as presented as recommended by Mr. Smith.
There's a motion by Mr. Varejao, is there a second?
Second.
Does that include the addendum?
Ah, including the addendum, yes, sir, sorry about that.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Castillo, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, you left them. Same sign, motion carries. Item 13, consider and take possible action on awarding of the following, RFPs 1921 through 1926.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, um, we do have these, um, RFPs and, uh, bids, uh, for your consideration. Uh, the very first one is for E-Rate. If there's any questions on that, we do have Mr. Eddie Science. And if not, um, that, that proposal, uh, and all the other bids, uh, recommendations are, are stated, um, for all these different, um, items.
Are they to the lowest bidders, Mr. Smith?
Uh, they're to the lowest bidders. We do have some catalog bids, I know there was concern that our auditor for, um, plumbing and electrical parts and, uh, air conditioning parts, so we asked for a catalog bid, which, uh, basically, the company will offer a percentage discount, uh, from their parts. Um, uh, what, what we've always tried to do, if we have a quote of $1,500 or more, that we will ask for three quotes, uh, for that. And, and these catalog bids are similar to what we do at the beginning of the school year for furniture, for office, and instructional support.
So, to understand you correctly, you will get three quotes, if you have three quotes, and then you will pick the lowest quote out of the three?
Yes, if, if, um, what, our, what we try to follow is, if we have a, uh, request for $1,500 or more, we'll ask for the three quotes. If they're smaller, you know, hu- hundreds of dollars, 300s on me, and 800, you know, we'll, we'll just ask for that one quote. If, if that's all right with the board.
With that said, I move that we approve item 13 and the bids, RFP 1921, R, uh, RFP 1921 bid, 1922, 1923, 1924, 1925, 1926 as presented, and as recommended by Mr. Smith.
There's a motion by Mr. Varejao, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much.
Item number 14, consider and take possible action, head B Policy AF exhibited Innovation District's resolution to consider designation as a District of Innovation.
Mr. President, members of the board, superintendent of school, Mr. Gonzalez, before you, on item 14, you have the District of Innovation, which is a concept where you have statute, which becomes legal policy to local policy. And pretty much TA allows you to adjust statute to fit local needs. For example, what you have before you is just respectfully seeking approval for a resolution to begin the process, and the statute that we're looking for is under chapter 25 of the Education Code. This is a start date for school, and the statute states the fourth Monday in August. And, uh, all charters adjust some of these statutes, of course, there are statutes that you can't change, this is one that you can. And we respectfully seek approval on this resolution to begin the process, to amend the statute where we can begin the first day of school, no later than the fourth Monday, and no earlier than the second Monday of August. And this allows flexibility. Now, there's, there's important facts here that we're not changing working calendar for teachers, they're at 187, the contract stays the same. And of course, the state also gives you a minimum of 7, 75,600 minutes, instructional minutes per year. On average, it's about 420 minutes a day, that's not to change either, that's the minimum. And this, this will allow us, examples that this might allow us to better instruct our children, uh, you have high school students who may have a transcript at the end of their graduation because of an earlier graduation date. That means they can go to summer school with, with an official transcript from their high school. Um, also, an earlier's end date in May gives you more instruction before the summer STAR session, if I'm not mistaken, there's a, there's a STAR session, which is the exam the children take in the summer. There's also more instructional days that are allowed, then more instruction will benefit our children. And in the spring, you have your STAR and, and of course, exams, which also give you more instructional days in the spring before those kids take those exams. There's a lot of flexibility tonight before you, uh, board members, we are asking, respectfully asking for approval to begin the resolution, to begin the District of Innovation initiative.
I know there was a lot of information provided at the work session, which was held earlier today at 5:30.
But, but we're really looking at an earlier start date, correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, Mr. President, I would like to add that our main focus is starting school early, so we're all the schools, all the school districts, or anyone operating in Stark County, we're starting basically at the same time. So, basically, uh, we start at the same time, we get our kids into the classroom at the same time. If we start two weeks earlier, where, where everybody else is at, number one. Number two is, you can actually have your first benchmark, uh, in the first couple of weeks of October, so you have something which is reliable and valid. And number three is that you can actually start at the total program in October and have something quality to the first semester and the second semester. So, but we do want to be where everybody sells at, that we're competing the start date. Because it's, it's very simple to start two weeks later, the thing is, then kids start coming, they, they might have gone somewhere else. And that, that's, am I correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. And also, for the record, I believe part of the resolution is the board shall appoint the District Innovation Committee. I would recommend that, uh, if possible, Mr. Peña, the superintendent, have his authority to appoint the committee, I don't know if that's, or it could be the superintendent's cabinet. That's part of the resolution, as you see on your pass out.
With that said, I move that we approve item 14 as presented in our board package.
The motion by Mr. Varejao, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 15, consider and take possible action on Power School Online Registration Software License.
The district would like to move to online registration, this is admissions for our children, pre-K, new to the district, at any level. And, uh, we do have a software platform that we use, currently use Power School, this is a multi-faceted, uh, software license that we have. And as you can see in your pass out, we're looking at a total of $84,000 over the three-year period. Uh, they're asking for $20,000 down payment, and the remaining balance to be paid at the school year of 1920. The funds are available through State Bilingual and SCE, which are federal funds. Uh, we are recommending that we pass, or at least consider this, so we can move towards online registration, as many districts are.
What's the total of the, of the amount?
$84,000.
And also, I would also like to answer that if, if this is approved, we'd like to start also with a three-year-old program. a three-year-old program. We would like to start registering, am I correct, sir?
That's correct.
So we would start off with a three-year-old program on up. So, just to let you know that this includes the three-year-old program, the four-year-old program, and on up, am I correct?
And you just.
I want to make sure that we're clarified, that we will be adding the three-year-old program.
And you said other districts are using, what other districts?
There's districts that use, we've seen from apps, apps on the phone or tablet, to, you know, other types of platforms. But the reason we chose this not only was the price lower than the people we seek, but the second thing is that we already have Power School. So whatever data we collect from this, from our community, it can be serviced for several facets throughout the community, I mean throughout the district, I'm sorry. So Power School's currently being used, I believe for grade, other facets in the district. So that, once that data comes in, it could be used throughout the district.
Any further discussion or motion on item B?
With that said, I move that we approve item fifteen, the Power School Online Registration Software as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Velazquez, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sanz. Item sixteen, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase the N2Y Solutions Software Program for the remainder of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year.
Mr. Board President, members of the board, superintendent of schools, we are asking for your permission to purchase the N2Y Solutions Program, and that is a software program that we will be using in our, I'm sorry, in our units, in special ed units. If you were to ask, and I'm going to go ahead and jump the board a little bit, if you were to ask why are we bringing a curriculum so late in the school year, we actually did have a curriculum at that time, we have the ACE ABA curriculum. However, after analyzing the effectiveness and the usage of the program, it wasn't something that was fit for our students in the unit. So therefore, it's been about twelve weeks that we started piloting this program, and it seems to be something that our teachers are wanting to use and our kids, it's kid-friendly, and it's an interactive, it's an interactive program. It's just so awesome to go out there and see our students, our autistic children, our Down Syndrome children, to see them interacting with a whiteboard and actually seeing them involved in using their software program. So we respectfully ask for your permission.
Any discussion or motion on item sixteen?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item sixteen as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item seventeen, consider and take possible action on request for permission to host the first annual Superintendent's Easter Egg Hunt on April seventeenth, twenty nineteen.
Again, we are seeking your approval. This is the first year that we will be having our first Superintendent's Easter Egg Hunt, and we are excited about that with our students, with the unit as well. So we ask for your approval for that.
I saw move.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Velazquez, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item eighteen, consider and take possible action on request for permission to host the first annual Walk in My Shoes Disability Awareness Walk on May seventeenth, twenty nineteen at the Basilio Varela Municipal Park.
Again, this is something, and the reason that we call it our first annual Walk in My Shoes Disability Awareness, we have had disability awareness events in the past. However, this year, we're going to begin partnering with the city and the county. We're inviting Roma and San Isidro to come, and we will be holding it, like it says there, at the Basilio Municipal Park. Before, we used to have a fun day that was graciously rotated by Dr. Stanley and Dr. Bean. However, what we're doing now is that we're going to incorporate the fun day together with a disability awareness walk, and we're going to make it one big event, and hopefully it's a success for all our students and community.
Yeah, discussion or motion on item eighteen?
I move that we approve item eighteen as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Item nineteen, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase one special needs bus.
Mr. Item nineteen, respectfully submit for a purchase of special needs bus, as you can see attached on your, page two hundred and fifty-five. This is a Micro Bird G five twenty nineteen model. Whole price is sixty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. This will be purchased by our special ed department. And anyone, I guess the caveat here, anyone without a CDL, you don't require a CDL to drive this bus.
Any further discussion on item nineteen or motion?
I'm over that we approve item nineteen as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item twenty, consider and take possible action on Rio Grande City C I S D High Schools' end-of-the-year events.
Board President, members of the board, Mr. Gonzalez, I'm bringing forth the end-of-year events for only the three high schools. There will be some other events added to the calendar, I understand, the middle school promotion that Dr. Trevino is working at. These are only the high school events, and we try to keep them all the same from last year. But we did provide all the events, they're listed there, for Early College High School, Rio Grande City High School, and Grúia High School. And then we provided you also a calendar of the list of events that will be taking place. And then we gave you a breakdown of the events based on last year's events for twenty eighteen. So we're going to try to stay within budget. I know that some of the items here, like the AP banquet, I know we were able to cut the banquet in half, so we're going to bring it, we did it at a hall, we're bringing it back to Rio High. Mr. Jorge Peña has offered to host the banquet, so we will not have to be paying for a venue for that banquet. And it's an AP banquet that we invite all three high schools, and everybody gets a plaque for passing an exam, and then the students that have passed three or more exams get a larger plaque. And then this year, we will also be giving our senior students who are AP scholars, because we have a good number of AP scholars from the three high schools, we'll be giving them like a stole that they'll wear for graduation. I think it's going to be silver, and it's going to say AP scholar, that they'll get that in addition. The students don't know about this, so it's going to be a surprise for that evening of the banquet. We will be sending an invitation, and hopefully some of you can make that.
Is there any discussion or motion on item twenty?
I saw move that we approve this item as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Varela. Item twenty-one, consider and take possible action on Rio Grande City C I S D Summer Twenty Nineteen S T C Dual Enrollment, Early College High School, Grúia High School, and Rio High School.
Good evening, Mr. President, board members, and Mr. Gonzalez. In order to meet the graduation requirements and options offered to our students for the dual enrollment, the district is requesting S-section courses through S T C for the summer of twenty nineteen. Students will be able to use these courses for high school graduation requirements and state accountability indicators. I have put there which sections each high school will be requesting. I know we have twenty-seven sections being requested for the first summer session and nine sections for the second summer session. I also included the cost. In speaking to the S T C representatives, some of those sections will not be able to be, they will not be able to get as a professor, so the cost might, there's going to be an adjustment to the cost. So it will go down. But we are looking in conversation also with S T C in housing some of these sections at S T C.
Any discussion or motion on item twenty-one?
I move that we approve item twenty-one as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Section six, reports and information. Item one, campus success report from Roque Guerra Junior Elementary.
My name is Vincent James Otho, and I am student council president of Roque Guerra Junior Elementary. Our journey begins here, where our educational foundation is laid and molded, where truly dedicated teachers ignite the spark for learning, and where lifelong friendships begin. Roque Guerra is not just a school, but in the least. Roque Guerra is so much more than that. Roque Guerra is our second home, because here, we are a family. As you can see, our mighty Colt family is a team of hard-working members who make our campus shine through academics, extracurricular activities, celebrations, and recognition events. Roque Guerra Junior Elementary received a B rating, as well as the title of our Yellow Ribbon Campus. Showtime is almost here, and we are ready to meet this year's goal, which is to become an A-rating campus. Go Colts!
Mr. Gonzalez, at this time, on the section six, I guess, is there any significant things, because we have to get to some interviews, could we table all those reports till the next meeting?
Yes. There's a motion by Mr. Varela to table items two to six.
Two to the four, five, and six to the next meeting, so we can get to some interviews.
Section six, reports and information, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign. I'm sorry, same. Six in favor, one extension. Motion passes. Section will proceed to closed session now, the authority of Texas Government Code, section five-five, one point zero seven one to five-five, one point zero eight four. The time is seven sixteen PM. We are recommending back to open session, the time is ten oh two. With regards to item A, there is no action required on that item. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item B?
I move that we move to approve the item B as discussed in executive sessions, or the employment of vacant positions.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Velazquez, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Do you have a motion on item C or any discussion?
I move that we follow the recommendations for accountant position as presented in executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Do you have a motion or discussion on item B?
I move that we, the expulsions of students as discussed in executive session, that we approve the expulsion of students discussed in executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Do I have any discussion or motion on item E?
I move that we approve, or that we name.
Sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry, there's no connection, there's no action required, it's item F.
Okay. I move that we approve as the finalist for superintendent, Mrs. Dilma Garza, and that we also, on the same motion, get a committee of Mr. Velazquez, Mr. Lopez, and Mr. Ramirez to negotiate terms with Dilma.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Velazquez, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Do I have a motion or any discussion on item G?
I move that we basically hire, let me put it, or that we execute the contract with consultants within the financial framework as discussed in executive session on that particular item, is that right?
Okay. Item number one under item B, or number one under item B. So it's two parts.
Okay, and, okay, and I believe that you move that we, item to be tabled, Mr.?
Yes, yes.
And item to be tabled.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Do I have any discussion or a motion on item E?